I'd like to call the special meeting to order for the town council on December 20th, and I'd like to start by standing and saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I wanted to recognize that President Pro Tem Matthew Manix is not able to make it tonight, and he has a message from the manager.
This message is from President Pro Tem Matthew Manix. I am unable to attend tonight's meeting because I'm giving my CCRRI students their final exam. Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you, Jim. And I also want the public and the council to know that the chamber is booked tonight for the school committee meeting, and it's at 7:00. So, we have a motion to read tonight and some conversation to have about the Belmont property, and hopefully we'll have plenty of time to have the public speak on the issue, but there will be far more to come. This is just the beginning of the conversations for the council and the public. So, at this time, I'm going to read a motion. Anne, do I have to do the motion for the warrant? A motion to accept the call and warrant for a special town council meeting on December 20th, 2017, and the warrant to be made as part of the record of this meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Four to zero, motion passes. A motion to approve the purchase of the building, land, and associated common elements of the former Belmont Marketplace from GPPR Retail LLC for the sum of $2.8 million. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. On October 16th, the town council had a public meeting at the Narragansett High School. We had the same motion before, it's a different number. The motion failed, so the deal was over. So, after that...
Excuse me, council president.
Oh, I thought I could give a little history.
You are, but the motion that...
The number's different, I said right, 2.8, it was 2.4.
Right, 2.7.
2.7, sorry. So, when we had the motion at the last meeting, it failed on October 16th. At that meeting, Mr. Gilbane came to the meeting and heard the cry of the public, and he heard that the people really wanted the library. The next morning, he contacted myself, and he asked if he could speak with Councilman Mari. We met him, we had no negotiations at all. He told us he wanted to work a deal out. We asked him to have the attorneys get back together and see if he could come up with a new proposal. And tonight, Gilbane has responded to that proposal. It's just a proposal, and we want to talk about that. The public has been asking about the library. We have not been able to release information almost a year. We started negotiating last March. We've had a dozen executive sessions. And so, this is an opportunity for the public to see what the proposal... We're not, we're going to go through it with this solicitor tonight, but I just wanted to give a little history on why we're here tonight, because we just got the response from Gilbane. It's close to Christmas, I apologize, but the work continues of the town's business. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to the solicitor to go through the proposal and what this council discussed in executive session, and what there is agreement on, and what will we stand with this proposal from Gilbane.
Okay. What the council has agreed to is to authorize myself and the assistant solicitor to negotiate towards an acceptable purchase and sales agreement. And that will involve a lot of different issues, a lot of terms and conditions which have not been discussed at this point, so we'll see where that takes us. What has been agreed to as of tonight are some important terms and conditions. What has been agreed to is the form of ownership. In the past proposal that was voted down in October, there was a condo involved. The form of ownership now will be outright ownership. So, this transaction is conditioned on obtaining all necessary approvals to subdivide that entire building, the land under it, and approximately a total of 1.1 acres. So, form of ownership is number one, that's been agreed to by both parties. Everyone agrees that it needs to be outright ownership. The second thing that has been agreed to is that the town would be purchasing the entire building, which now consists of the old Belmont Market and the liquor store. So, the town, when the deal is done, would own that entire building, surrounding land outright, and not as a condo. The council has also agreed to a purchase price of 2.7 million. Both parties have agreed that if the deal goes through, the town would take assignment of the pier liquor lease, which I believe has approximately two years left on it. And in the proposal that I believe was circulated, there was a consideration about seller financing for the additional price to purchase the liquor store. The council has decided that they do not want to accept any seller financing, so there will be no seller financing. It'll be a deal done without the Gilbane involvement. So, those are the major terms that have been conceded to on both sides, but like I said, anyone who's knowledgeable about purchase and sales agreements knows that there's a lot of details and terms that have not been discussed or negotiated. So, I know as Councilman Moretti always says is that this is the beginning of the process. And so, if it's approved, it would be the beginning of the negotiation of the purchase and sales agreement.
Thank you.
And that's where we stand.
Excellent. Any comment from the council before we go to the public?
Yeah, let me just say a couple things. So, first of all, I commend the hard work of everybody that's been involved. It's certainly something that I've been advocating for since I decided to run for town council, and I think it's extremely complex. I think it actually is, you know, it went from being an okay deal to, in my opinion, at least what I see so far, a great deal for the town in terms of ownership in the center, in what I call ground zero, in the center of Narragansett. So, I'm extremely happy to see that we've taken a giant step forward. I also compare and review, you know, sale prices of both residential and commercial real estate all the time, and, you know, the price per square foot, which I think Patrick is going to go through, has made this even more attractive to me. So, I thank you, Mark, and Patrick, and Susan, and Jill, and, you know, for her candor, and everybody else, so...
Thanks. Patrick can go first.
I just got a little presentation of what was the old deal and the new proposed library purchase. Okay. So, you recognize those two buildings, it'd be a combined, that whole 2,200 square feet. Okay, how we doing here? There we go. Okay, this is the previous condo proposal, two months ago. As you can see, we had a standalone condo, and roughly, almost 19,000 square feet. The new ownership proposal, as you can see outlined, is additional parking, the liquor store, and the access, additional 17... Additional 17 parking spaces just north of the police station. You can't really see it well there. That's not working. Yeah, I don't know what happened to the dot. I'm losing my dot here, so... All right, well, here's a comparison, okay? Couple things that changed as I put this together from this morning. The condo was 2.4, it was condo ownership. It was one unit, almost 19,000 square feet, with 59 parking spaces, easement access only, and perpetual CAM fees, common area maintenance fees. And then, we would have 30% voting representation in a two-unit association, condo association, with Gilbane controlling 70% voting rights. Okay, the new proposal, ownership is, that should be 2.7 instead of 2.8. We got fully deeded ownership. We're going to end up with a lot that's approximately 1.1 acres, with a designated lot. We're going to be purchasing both Unit 1 and Unit 2 for a combined of almost 22,000 square feet. We're looking at 83 parking spaces. That says 85, but it's actually 83. That's one of the changes. And easement ownership, we would own the access, and Gilbane and everyone else would have right of passage instead of the other way around. Minimum common fees, we have, you know, we have common property lines, so it's not so much CAM charges, it's just kind of a mutual agreement of servicing those property lines. So, it'd be a lot less than, you know, a 50,000 a year CAM charge. And then, clear deeded ownership, and the lot would be over one acre. Okay, so, the value. Okay, we're ready to purchase the condo for 2.4. We had it appraised at just over 2 million. The assessed value was 1.8 million. I took that same appraisal, and I plugged it in, adding the new square footage of the liquor store, the pier store, and we were purchasing it $109 per square foot. Not purchasing, the appraiser valued it $109 per square foot. So, the pier store came up just over 300,000. Parking, remember, we've got 83 parking spaces, okay? We're 1.1 acres of land. So, for example, the 28 Castle Street where Dr. Lodge's office complex is, that's .6 acres, and that's assessed at 425,000. The lot that's over at Trio, that's about just under 8,000 square feet, and that assessed at just under 300,000. So, I did it a couple ways. I figured this lot, the acre, one acre in the pier would be worth between 500 and 750,000. The other way I did, I took the 85, well, now 83 parking spaces, and I figured if I was going to condoize them, what would they be worth? All right, it's been done before, it's been done in cities, and actually, some guy did it down in the beachfront down in South Kingston. I came up with a value between 8,000 and 10,000 per parking space. So, I used eight times 85, I came up with about 680,000 for the parking. So, that put the value, for me, you know, to justify this purchase at 2.7, the value of just over 3 million. I didn't include the tenant, who's now paying 60 grand a year, and we're netting, we would net about 40 grand a year on that purchase, on that unit. So, that represents the value that I see. But I think, I think it would be prudent to go back to endorphy appraisal and have them take another look at this and, you know, reassess the value of the new proposal. Okay, here's the pier theater. That's currently up for sale, and that's, they're asking $2 million. It's a standalone condo on a ground lease. That's about 11,600 square feet, and it's currently $174 per square foot at 2 million. The library purchase at 2.8, which is now 2.7, would be $128.47 per square foot, actually less than that if we paid 2.7. So, that's about it, that's all I got there. So, that's just a summary of what we had and what the new proposal looks like. Thank you.
Excellent, Patrick. Excellent.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Not as much of a crowd this time as we had back in October, but many of the same faces here. I guess I just want to start off by talking about that October meeting. That was a very difficult meeting for the town. It was a very difficult meeting for myself, and I can think probably Pat and Matt to vote no, but I want to make it crystal clear. I, I believe Pat and Matt will tell you, we didn't vote no for the library, we voted no for the terms, because we just didn't believe that the terms at that point were the best interest of the town. And that's our job, to be able to negotiate deals in the best interest of the taxpayer. And lo and behold, what happened? We had a lot of heat from you, a lot of heat, that night, in the newspapers, on Facebook, but look what happened. They came back with a great deal, a great deal. That's what negotiating's all about. Sometimes you have to make a difficult vote and say no to have people come back to the table with terms that are more acceptable, and that's what's happened here. So, I just want to actually really praise Patrick. I think that he led the efforts on the ownership very well. He did a great job, and I think everybody here will agree with that. But me for one, I still think that we can do more for the taxpayer. I do want to have the library there. I take a look at the current library and say, wow, that would make one heck of a good senior center. The growing population in Narragansett are our seniors, and we do not have anything near what South Kingstown offers them, and I think we should do that here. But I do believe that we need to go back and take a look at terms. Anyone who is involved in real estate knows that in terms of a purchase and sales, it's just not the dollar amount. There are other things that can be negotiated that we can go back and ask Gilbane to contribute to, to help the town. So, again, I want the library in that building, but I want it on the best possible terms for the town, Narragansett taxpayers. That's my job, so...
Thank you, Jill. Anybody from the public wishing to speak? No, wow, that's... That's good. It must have been your client on the PowerPoint. Stanley, come on up. Well, it was pretty close. Stanley, state your name and...
Stan Wojciechowski in Narragansett. Apologize for my clothes, I just got out of working. I commend you for at least making an effort to get the finance situation in order, and I can only beg that you even pursue further as I look at, yes, we focused on that, and I love the library, by the way, I love the library. And yeah, we're going to put a library somewhere, and that's fine, you know, but for us to, I always look at choices, all the time, anything, I've said it before. I want two or three choices, all the time. And when I get choices, I want to evaluate those choices and look at the finance as well as location, every other thing, but I want three choices. And I'm not so sure we vetted the three choices that well. And therefore, I want to reconsider, or consider, the senior center. We can build a building around the senior center until two or three high, we have plenty of parking spaces over there, and we don't pay 2.7 million dollars for that thing. It's free, from my perspective. So, we start out, we've got a bill here of 2.7, just so we can be a few blocks closer to the water. And I, my value in the library is going there and enjoy the librarians, the people, the whole situation. I don't care whether, I don't care whether the library's down near the beach, over here, the senior center, or Sunset Farms, I don't care where it is in town, because I'll go there, I like it. Anybody goes to the library, loves it, after a while, you love the thing. And like I told you before, I met my wife at a library. I wouldn't have married her if I didn't meet her in a library. The library was the key of my life, I loved the library. However, this is about finance, about the need, a very real need to have it in the most expensive lot in Narragansett, almost a beachfront lot. And that's, as a taxpayer, financially looking at it, I'm not so sure we need to do that. In fact, from my perspective, we don't need to be there. I don't want to pay an extra $2 million for two blocks. I just don't want to do that. And I hope you could at least consider the alternatives with the financial point of view. Let's try and save 2.7 million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Stanley. Anybody else wishing to speak? When you come to the podium, just say your name and address.
Mary NATO, 102nd Street, Narragansett, Rhode Island. My only rebuttal is, I, the newest library in the state of Rhode Island is Tiverton. They built it on a main road of Tiverton. It cost them 11 and 1/2 million, 11.8 million dollars from the ground up, no building. So, I'm not sure how we can build another library in town, starting from square one, and get anything within our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
My name's Bob Weiner. I grew up at 141 Central Street over here, and I'm not currently a resident of Narragansett, but I grew up here, and I was actually on the, one of the high school kids on the town committee for creating the business district, and it was never, it was never built the way it was approved by the citizens group, number one. Number two, I'm on the city council of the town I live in, in Harris County, Texas, and one of the things we're always conscious of, and you're saying you're trying to stick out, look out for the citizens and the taxpayers, you're giving up, like Wojciechowski said, you're giving up prime property for sales tax generating businesses. The store's closed now, it's been closed for a while, but that's, you know, the complexities of the way you allowed the land development. So, that's a huge negative on the town. Now, I went to elementary school in this building, and then junior high school when the elementary school was the junior high school. That's got great facilities, great grounds, and it's not far from where you are. But now, you're going to take two. If you turn the library into a senior citizen center... Well, you know, it's going to go public, probably. You're losing two very prime retail positions in the town, which is shocking as a citizen from Texas to see what a town would do to the citizens of this town with regards to business development. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori? You must be visiting family, yeah. I don't know, I don't know.
Lori Kelly, 25, Wildfield Farm Road. Yes. So, again, thank you for all the time and effort, the library, the staff, the friends, the 5,000 people and more that voted with this being, of all 10 options that were examined diligently with construction people and architects and finance people, we appreciate. Susan, you've been on board for so long, fighting for us. Mike, since you came in, you looked at all our, all our information, you said, you know, obviously, this is a good decision for the town, and Patrick, for your vision to fight us to this unbelievably good deal. I mean, I was happy with it before, and what you've done is, is head and shoulders even better. So, really, we really appreciate it, and, and thank you for all your time and effort. And I know this is the beginning of a hard struggle to get it actually done, but we appreciate everything. The library, Patrick, is the economic engine of the downtown. We used to have the Where's the Town organization. This will just coalesce into a lot of good things for the town, and we appreciate you, everyone, for seeing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Anybody else wishing to speak? Meg?
Good evening. I have a quick question for Patrick Mari. The $60,000 that's currently being paid by the tenant, do you know when their lease expires?
I think it's a three-year lease, and I think they got two years left, and I think the net over there is right around 40,000 a year.
And do you know if that $60,000 is going to more than cover the minimum fees that you posted, not condo fees, but there was new nomenclature up there?
Well, those are big, those are big unknowns. I mean, I mean, it's like you share a property line at your home, I mean, what does it cost for you to share a property line with a neighbor? So, that's basically what we're down to, so...
And will our DPW be able to plow the snow and maintain those parking spaces for us?
Well, we would own the, we would own the access, you know, in and out of that area, so...
So, our DPW will be taking care of that? So, again, I just want to weigh in, we're almost at the finish line here, it looks like, and I think the vast majority of people in town are really worn out, and we're ready to pull this across the finish line now. We're so close, and this is a vision thing, and a couple of you had the vision, and then someone stepped forward and really is making this happen. So, let's pull this across the finish line now, while we're so close, before we lose this deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. Agreed. Anybody else wishing to speak? Mary?
Mary, Stanley was just telling me he used to pick up chicks at the library. You weren't here, you just walked in. Want to let you know what's going on when you're not around here.
Mary, state your name and address.
Oh, Mary Wojciechowski, Narragansett.
Thank you.
I've seen the sign from Delman's Real Estate, trying to rent it. Are they going to be selling it to the town? Is it going to be involved?
No, no, there's not a real estate agency involved with the...
They still have the sign up there.
Well, they're trying to lease it or sell it, but, you know, that's just, you know, they've just been trying to market that property for quite some time.
So, you're planning to buy this now?
That's the proposal, to move forward into a purchase and sales agreement.
Not as a condo?
No condos, no. 1.1 acres of land.
But not all that parking lot, because you have to share...
83 parking spaces.
Oh, it's gone up on that, okay.
Thank you, Mary. Catherine?
Catherine Celebrato, 4800 Court. I want to thank Patrick, Matt, and Jill for coming up with this much, much better deal. We were almost on the verge of paying 2.4 million dollars for a condo, CAM fees ad infinitum, and all types of other costs, and that really scared me, frankly. Mary just brought something up. Are we going to have to pay Delman a real estate commission?
No.
No, we're not going to pay...
There's no agency involved.
All right. And going forward, we're going to have to think about, we're going to have a tax loss, since it's coming off the tax rules, we have to budget for that. We're going to have increased maintenance costs. I think we're going to need more staff, library staff, we're going to have a much bigger library.
Correct.
And all of these things have to be considered when we do the budget, I know that, in the future, and I'm just worried about where is it going to come from, you know, that all these increased costs.
Well, I crunched a couple numbers, and my vision for the old library is to turn it into three condos and lease them out. Again, anywhere from 16 to 18 dollars a square foot.
Yeah, but how much is that going to cost us to do that?
Well, I mean, you know, you got to, there's a little going in cost and build-out cost, but the pier is an excellent location for a business, for some businesses who are even down there who would like to expand, and I've approached a couple people, and they have interest in, possible interest in leasing that. And, you know, a long-term tenant would, you know, would probably be clearing like 90,000 a year, once all the build-out costs are done.
I...
To help offset the cost of the new library.
Right, as long as we don't sell any town-owned buildings, I don't think we should be selling anything.
Well, we can't sell that, it would be a violation of the bond to sell the old library.
I see, okay.
So, we couldn't sell it. The only thing we could do is lease it or occupy, at this point.
Do we have any idea what the percentage that these bonds are going to pay when they put out?
Laura Kenyon isn't here. I think they're what, three?
Any idea?
Three or four, somewhere on there?
You're talking about the percentage of reimbursement?
That the bond is going to pay, you know, it's 5.8 million dollars in bonds, how much are we going to have to pay interest rate on that, to sell these bonds?
Laura's not here, but I'm thinking it's about, I think it's about 200,000 a year is what our debt would be on that full bond. But, but that does not include the reimbursement we would get from all of us.
You get half back.
Right, potential 50% reimbursement. I'm not a real estate person, but I agree with Jill that I think there might be more contingencies in this contract, you know, that are going to have to be worked out.
Agreed.
So, we have a really favorable deal for us.
This is the beginning of the beginning.
And I'd like one of those contingencies to be that if we pay 2.7 million, and the state only wants to reimburse us, say, a million, that we have some kind of recourse to get the purchase price lowered in some way? You know, because if we're going to pay 2.7 million, and we...
Well, you know, right now, we're at $128 per square foot.
I know, I know.
Thank you, Catherine.
I mean, to build it...
Time's up.
To build it would be, at a minimum, $225 a square foot, to build it. This building was rehabbed in 2007.
I thank the three of you for negotiating this better deal.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Mickey Dickinson from Colonel John Gardner. First of all, I want to congratulate all of you, and particularly Patrick.
Aren't you the one that sent me the email saying I couldn't read?
I'll have to, I'll have to send you another email.
That's why you're bored against it, because you don't know how to read?
Send another one. It must have been all those emails, that's what it was. And I, and I left home tonight and said to my husband, I'm going to have to shake Patrick's hand, which I, in some ways, I never thought I would do after our Colonel John Gardner situation.
There's someplace freezing over today.
Right, but that, that's excellent. I do think... I do think the person who said it's vision, and you do have to be a visionary with your feet on the ground, and I think you do have your feet on the ground, so I'm not concerned, because I do think you have, you're all very responsible people. I shudder in some ways when I see people stepping back and bringing up some of the issues that were there, it's time to move forward, and it's time to close the deal. And you're responsible, and you've shown that responsibility, far better deal than was on the table. So I thank you guys, and I also thank Bob Gilbain for willing to negotiate and stepping up and saying, let's work at this and try one more time. So I think it takes both parties to do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just one thing too, as far as the vision going forward, we'll have many workshops, public workshops on that, you know, Pat's thoughts, my thoughts on what might happen at the library. That's just, that's just what we're thinking, but the public will have a chance to weigh in, and there'll be many opportunities.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
Sue Bush, 65 Robinson. I just want to congratulate you all, and I do appreciate your taking the cautious tack to those of you who wanted to renegotiate something better. I too was concerned about the condo fees. I mean, it's just not responsible for a municipality to take on some unknown quantity of debt. So thank you for making the difficult decision and sticking to your guns and doing what's right for the town. I really appreciate it. And to those who think that a business would be better off there, the building's been sitting empty for years, so how attractive is it as a location for a business? So, you know, there were rumors about this entity coming and that retailer coming, and they draw a circle, and half the circle of population is in the water, and fish don't buy many groceries or whatever. So I think, I was a member of the Where's the Town Committee, and I'm glad to see this happen, because public buildings will bring people and help those retailers, so I think it'll be a big boost for all of those shops there. So thanks again, and congratulations.
Thank you, Sue. Anybody else wishing to speak? See, no hands in the audience. Can we just go through what we agreed on so we can vote on the motion one more time?
Okay. What was agreed to was that you would authorize myself and the assistant solicitor to negotiate towards a purchase and sales agreement that would be acceptable to the town council. And the purchase and sales agreement would include these provisions, these significant provisions that, that must be in any purchase and sales agreement. And that is, the form of ownership is fee simple, it's outright ownership, the deal is contingent on obtaining all approvals necessary to subdivide the building and the land. We are, we would be purchasing the entire building comprised of Belmont and the Pier Liquor Store at this point. The purchase price would be 2.7 million dollars. There would be no seller financing, there would be an assignment of the current lease to Pier Liquors. And, and those are the major terms that have been agreed to that need to be part of any purchase and sales agreement.
Thank you, Mark. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained for two reasons, because I really would like to have the public have more chance to take a look at this, and they're learning it, well, from Phil from the Narragansett Times earlier today, but for, for the confirmation of the facts just at this meeting. For those of you at home, there are very few people here, I just think that the public should have had more of a chance to be here and ask questions. Also, 5 o'clock, a lot of people work, I mean, they couldn't be here at 5 o'clock. So for that reason, and the fact that I would like to have, have this be renegotiated, I'm going abstained, but once again, I want to say, I want the library to be at the Gilbain Building.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oh, we, I already, Mary, I already had asked. All those were in favor, three, we just, and one abstention. So motion passes, three to, three to one abstention. Yeah, thank you, thank you. More to come. Good night, everybody. A motion to adjourn.
I'll move that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero, motion passed.